Good evening, we're going to call to order the Thursday, July 26th meeting of the Planning Board. It is 7:05, 7:06, and we are officially convened. We start our meeting with public comment on any items that are not on our agenda. So would anybody like to make a comment regarding any issue that doesn't appear on our agenda? Last call. We'll move to our 7:00 PM item, which is a continuation of a 40-hour review with Sunwood Development Corporation for 28 residential units off of Olander Drive, North Hampton map ID 31C-17. Before the presentation, one quick announcement. I was one of the people who was not here at the last meeting, so I have viewed the recording of the meeting that took place on the 28th of June, so I am up to speed on the original part of the hearing. And you might please do my voice. We do also have two new members of the Planning Board, so George, would you like to introduce yourself?
My name's George Kohot, and I also reviewed the video and transcript up there. That was all before I moved to you.
My name's Krista Garnett, and I did the same. Thank you, go ahead.
I'm Chris Jamrin from Berkshire Design Group. I also was not at the last meeting to present. I'm filling in for Jeff Squire, who unfortunately decided to climb a mountain in Switzerland this week instead of joining us. So at the previous meeting, there was a more full discussion of the site, and so I'm primarily here to update on some of the outstanding issues that were left open and led to the continuation, of which there are primarily three. The first one being the stormwater permit. We have advanced the stormwater permit application quite a bit since the last meeting, but it has not been issued yet. It has been submitted to DPW. I spoke with Doug McDonald this morning, and he's overall satisfied with the plan. It seems as though we've been able to account for the impervious area across the entire site adequately, which was his biggest concern, this being the last major piece of stormwater that's going to be built before the development is complete. We also have proposed adding some water quality swales around some of the interior yard drains to add some more low-impact development, and so those are all positive, but Doug felt that he's, again, this being the last piece with all the details to come, that he needed a little more time before he could issue that with proper conditions. So that's where the stormwater permit stands. The second item was ADA access to the site. Between the previous meeting and this one, there's been a meeting in the fields with the developer, the city, and the neighbors to discuss the access, and an agreement has been reached among those parties that ADA access to the site can be provided through a concrete walkway through Memorial Park, which is on the map. My mouse will show up. It keeps disappearing on me.
You have to get closer.
Yeah, it's the plus sign. Let's see. Oh, that's annoying. I can't figure out how to make it something more visible. But it is at the extreme bottom end of this image, you'll see near the entrance of the site, there is a single-family home, and then the next lot down is where the park is located. The agreement was that Sunwood, as part of this development, would build the ADA accessible walk through the park to the standard of the plan, which my understanding is has already been approved by the Planning Board, and that cost sharing of that path would be between Sunwood and the neighbor group. And then finally, there was the request to summarize the number of trees that would need to be replaced if this application had been applied for new, under the new tree ordinance. And I have a table here summarizing that. So if we exclude dead or diseased trees, we have 1,886 total caliper inches of live trees that would be cut under the new ordinance that would require a replacement of 934 inches, and the proposed plan includes 329 inches to be planted.
Chris, can you clarify? That's the trees over 20-inch DPH, it's not total.
Correct. That's not total removal. That is only the ones that would be subject to the ordinance, which are 20-inch DPH or greater.
And can you just clarify, that's not necessarily a clean, like, one-third? Like, how did you arrive at that figure?
We took the plans as was proposed. It was not, the proposed plans were not created to try to achieve any particular ratio. That is based on the landscaping plan that was developed first for the original site and then modified for the new one.
And to just clarify both for the public and for the board, this is a continuation of a hearing, so public, the public hearing is still open?
Yep.
So we'll start as by interlocuting, questions from the board for the presenter, and then we can move to questions or comments from the public. So were there any comments from the board regarding these three items?
So I guess I'm confused if, what was it, 900 are required and 300 and some are provided? What happens to the difference?
So that was the question that came up last. So this is an amendment of a plan that was approved before the zoning ordinance changed to create a calculation for tree replacement for significant trees of 20 inches or larger. So the discussion that came up last meeting was, knowing that this was an amendment, they were following under the old rules, and then the board asked them to see how that compares to the new rules in terms of the number of trees they were planting. So it was merely a quest to understand those, that variation, and there was a discussion about whether there should be more planting, or whether the board was comfortable with the idea that they were amending a plan that was approved under the old rules.
So the question then would be what the prior means?
I mean, from a sound perspective, we feel that because this is an amendment, they're amending certain pieces of the plan, so they're, they're still amending what, based on that permit that was issued before the tree replacement zoning ordinance was adopted.
And if I can clarify a little bit on that labeling on the table, it's the trees that would have been required under an application under the new rules.
So I gather your position, or the applicant's position, would be that they're not required for this?
That we are amending the original plan, which was approved before the creation of the tree ordinance.
So from the video of the last meeting, there seemed to be some back and forth about whether or not that was appropriate, and it sounds as if we had not come to some agreement on that?
Right. It sounded from the end of the meeting that you, the board wanted to see what those numbers were.
Right. So the question to you all is, you know, is this substantially similar to the prior plan, and do we, you know, sort of act as if the current tree replacement requirements are not in effect because they weren't in effect when the first plan was developed? Or are we in a position to say, you know, that was then, this is now, we've got to find a way to increase the number of caliper inches that are being replaced? So that's where, that's where we're at, and that's, my understanding is that because there is no stormwater permit, we will be continuing this for another month? Is that correct?
Well, no. So the board just, I think we'll need to continue it, but the next meeting is August 9th, so it's two weeks.
Okay.
But the application and calculations and the plan revisions were just submitted on Tuesday to DPW, so they have not had any time to sort of go through, and there are some other changes that need to be made. Catch basins needed to be added to the plan, things of that sorts. That's just sort of the first cut, looking at that. So the rules say the board can't close the hearing until stormwater permits with that issue.
Okay.
So it will need to be continued, but to the extent that-
But we can take this question to another two weeks. We shouldn't-
I, no, I think you all have, should take the opportunity to close out all the other issues and sort of leave the stormwater piece to that final, and then the final conditions can incorporate, you know, what you all talked about tonight, plus whatever DPW recommends in terms of the stormwater piece.
Okay. Well, having lunch, go ahead.
So on the trees, the 396 inches, those are again a minimum of 20 inches, as you referred to the DPH. What are, are we talking?
So it's the total number of inches that are being planted, so, and it's measured, for new trees, it's measured in caliper, which is a different location on the tree than a mature tree that you take down. So the 390, whatever it changed, the number is, is the total, are the total number of inches based on the plan that's been submitted. I haven't checked the numbers, because sometimes the trees, the other piece of it is, some, the tree schedule, the planning schedule, sometimes says between two and two and a half inches, you know, depending on what's at the nursery and all of that. So I don't know if this number is the bottom, the two-inch versus the two and a half inch, or if it's the two and a half inch. And you all could also specify that minimum, you want a minimum of, you know, two and a half, or a minimum of two, to come up to this number of 329, instead of, you know, figuring out what that is.
So at the last meeting, I think one of the things that came up was the idea, and we didn't decide on this by any stretch, but it was proposed that maybe you guys could think about doing, adding some extra trees either here, or donating other trees to the city of North Hampton as a sort of gesture toward the new requirements, so not requiring you to leave the full 934, but move more in that direction. Was that considered or discussed further?
Sure. Do you know what, if any, discussion there was on that?
I'm Sean Perry from Sunwood Development, and we were waiting for input from the city. Our position is that we are applying for a permit that's been allowed to carry the number of trees that we have, so we included that in our application.
So it's really now on us to figure out if, if we are going down the path of not requiring the maximum tree replacement requirement that would be in effect today, and, you know, and if we will kind of allow it to reduce amount. And my understanding is that one of the arguments for that is that this, that Hospital Hill is a unique project, it is unlike any other development throughout the city, and that this is part of a concept plan that was originally put forth, that this portion of the site is being developed. You know, certainly somebody can make an argument that, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to do has changed over time, and that, you know, we should sort of, to the maximum extent possible, try to meet whatever standards are in place today. But that is a question that we do have to figure out.
If I could, I would add to the first half of that, that, and this project in particular is substantially similar to the cohousing project that was proposed and approved in 2015. It's a somewhat smaller number of units, but a similar layout and essentially an identical concept in terms of cohousing.
All right. You gotta learn that.
If there's always one person, right?
Yes.
Other thoughts? Should we just go around the board? Well, we'll start by having discussion on the board. If we'd like to pause for discussion and hear from the public, and then come back to more discussion, we can do that. Can you rather do that? Okay. Let's hear from the public, and if you could, as always, come to the podium, state your name and your address for us, and then provide whatever feedback you may have. No comments on the trees? Then we're on our own, figure it out. Comments?
I think they, they didn't make that much change, much change, so, and it should be up to them to show their good faith, because it's kind of quite old, right, in terms of the zoning, the requirement for the trees, and I think it'll be up to them to, since there is no public in here, to kind of make an argument.
Okay. So you're of the mindset that this is an amendment, we should not apply today's standards to a prior permit? Any comments?
Yeah, I think my view would be the same. I think, given the overall scope of the project, the changes are pretty minimal. I mean, it's being, it's what, four or six units fewer?
Yeah.
But given, as I say, the scope and description of the project, it's pretty much the same thing. I don't think it would be fair to oppose current requirements on what is essentially previously approved.
Comments?
I kind of feel the same way for existing applications, that maybe then go back and have to redo something that we're doing now. It would seem feasible.
One comment that Mark Sullivan made in the prior meeting was to request if it was possible to kind of see, to visualize the current site plan over the existing, and see if there are other places in the site that could accommodate, you know, again, as Dennis said, kind of inching up towards what that requirement would be by today's standards. Was that an undue burden, or was that possible to visualize?
If we're talking about broad strokes of buildings and parking lots, I think that's reasonable. I would hesitate to say that we could put too much detail in there, because it's very difficult to layer it in a way that's readable.
Yeah.
But that's certainly something that we could do, at least at a basic level.
Yeah, I don't know how a lot of people felt who were at the prior meeting when Mark made that recommendation, if that's critical to figuring out where you fall on this issue. It was something that, earlier this afternoon, when I was watching it, that I saw him say that that could be helpful.
Yeah. And I would also say that, preface that, that it could be misleading also at the, at the level at which we have to do it, in terms of simplicity of the plan. We may obscure steep slopes where it would be inappropriate to plant trees, so there would be an ambiguity to it, but at that base, it could be, we could present something if the board wanted.
So it is my first meeting, I don't want to go against the other members, I wasn't here for the back and forth, except for the video. But I think the first plan was approved in 2015, two years ago. A lot has happened in North Hampton since then about the understanding of trees and the tree canopy, and the planting of trees, and the inventory of trees, and that's, I think, where this new ordinance came from, the new regulations. So I don't think we're doing justice to that by allowing the developer to move that far away from those, that criteria. And I think when a developer does come in and ask for amendments, the developer does open themselves up to what is the current kind of state of ordinances or regulations. So, and also, that's just a very, very wooded area of the state hospital, where they're going to lose a great portion of that during the development, an incredible amount. So much more than I think they're even offering to. So I would think they could come at least halfway, you know? I don't want to be negotiator around exact things. What if they came up to like 600 or something away from the 320? I think that would be reasonable. How they're doing the planting, it's certainly an extra cost on their part to buy that stock, but they're going to have crews in there planting, there's ways to do that in a way that will look certainly reasonable. Yeah, I just think we've come a long way as far as understanding about trees and how we're losing more trees all the time for development. So I would pose that, maybe if they can move up a little.
Yeah. I'm of a similar mindset. I mean, I think, I think largely people are right that this was approved under previous rules, and so to ask them to meet the full current requirements seems undue, when we heard about the high cost of that at the last meeting. But at the same time, I think some kind of substantial gesture toward the current requirements would just be appropriate, given where the city is today.
How do folks feel about this kind of, at least, at least half of the requirement based on current?
I think my, my opinion would be that it isn't a question of the reasonableness of the current requirement, as you say. There's, maybe, maybe it's a better requirement or a better provision of the zoning ordinance that was previously there. Question in my mind is whether it can reasonably be applied to them. And it's, again, I think it's quite a small amendment, given the scope of a project like this, and it's just the fact that the ordinance is better now than it used to be doesn't mean it can be applied to that.
But I also think what we're happening, if your suggestion is to bring it up to half, we're talking about an extra, I'm hearing 50 inches. It doesn't seem like a huge amount, but it's a, it's a meaningful gesture without being overkill.
Krista, any comment on the sort of proposition of trying to get at least halfway towards today's standard?
To be or not to be, right?
To be or not to be.
Kind of a, it makes sense, but the fact that it makes sense does not kind of mandate or obligate, I mean, you're obligated to do it. I'm kind of sticking with what I think about.
Okay. I have a question, Carolyn, for you. I didn't see this in the video, and it was mentioned, and I'm sorry, I missed it, but what are the precedents with similar, have we had similar amendment issues unrelated to tree requirements, but, I mean, what is our process when amendments come before us? I mean, do we, are we required current, adherence to current standards?
So I think that typically, yes. I mean, you come for an amendment, it sort of opens up everything.
Yeah.
And, but it doesn't mean that the board is necessarily obligated to go back and make adjustments based on the rules that have been modified. I mean, the one thing that's, so, I will say, though, that there's a window in which you can substantially start a project under an over permit. They filed within that window, whereas other projects could come back, other applicants could come back and amend a permit anytime, even outside that window of substantial starting. And I think that might be-
Like our next map?
Right, right. So what, in that scenario, it's, I think there'd be no question that you'd have to say, well, you have to follow the new rules, because there's a reason why there's a window in which to start your project, because policies change and ordinances change. So I think that in this case, so, again, you could go either way, but I think there's a strong merit to allowing them to continue under the rules that were in place, because it was still-
That seems more reasonable to me. I mean, my initial reaction from the video was where you guys are, which is that, you know, we don't replace trees because they're pretty, and we replace them because there's serious ecological services, and there's stormwater management, there's a whole host of other reasons that, you know, that tree replacement is important, and then, of course, we should always be applying current standards. But the development window seems, that, it seems like we have already kind of said this is the, you know, maybe that's something that we look at separately, and apart from this application, if that's very long, or, you know, we're seeing this issue come up again. You know, I think in terms of a good faith effort, it would be, I would love to see it be at least half or more, you know, of what the current requirement is, but that amendment seems to be valid, and it's difficult to retroactively, you know, take this amendment that's within this window of time and apply today's tree replacement requirements. So I would be inclined to, you know, ask that if there is a way to increase that number, that it be increased, but that we not condition, you know, adhering to the current tree replacement deadlines, you know, and accept either this number that's put forth, or, you know, something closer to 470, you know, 470 inches, if that's feasible.
Sure.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I also appreciate Jenna's other suggestion, that if it's impractical because of the planting plan and the topography, that if they wanted to perhaps donate some trees to the city's effort in other areas, that might also be something to look at.
I like that.
I mean, that does underscore that, you know, again, this isn't, it's not just that we like to look at trees, but they have a very important function in terms of what we do when we develop land, you know, there's, that's the reason that we have these ordinance. Is that something that we could condition, or something we could just request?
Well, if you want them, as a board, to do more, plant more trees, you know, the difference between what they're showing at half is 138 inches. So if you want them to do more, you don't have to specify that they can do them onsite, or, I mean, you could say onsite, or otherwise following the established procedure in the zoning ordinance for planting offsite. We already have that mechanism for people to plant on other locations offsite if it doesn't work. But I think you need to make the decision, do you think they need to do this or not, and not leave it as a suggestion.
So you're saying that either we should just approve it as is for requirement, but not approve it with a suggestion?
Right.
Right. Yeah, can't make a suggestion.
Yes. Do we need to take any kind of preliminary test vote, or how are we feeling if we were to not acquire it?
I mean, ultimately, you can, you're not closing the hearing tonight.
Right.
And you'll be issuing a decision in, presumably in two weeks, so you could take a straw poll now, but it doesn't mean anything's going to stand, or you could just leave it at more time.
I like your idea about deciding the issues unless they're here and not have to read this one.
So the question is, the existing 329, or 329 plus 138, whatever that number is? And Alan, what are you thinking?
I, I think that, notwithstanding that it's always a good idea to plant more trees, I just don't think we have the authority, nor do I think would be fair to require it. So I think we stick with what they were granted previous.
I would have to say the same thing. 329, it would be nice to see a gesture of more trees, but not to require it.
Yep.
George?
Yeah, no, I guess I would go the other way. I think it really, it would be important to at least get some more trees in that area. You know, a buddy of this property is out, another big, huge, open space, and who knows where it's, but two things happen there. I just think the amount that's been taken down and the amount that's even required to plan, it doesn't come close to what they're doing. And I think a, a project of this scale can accommodate that kind of extra without breaking anybody's kind of bottom line for the plan, so. So I guess I would vote for requiring that, add that extra 139.
Alan, you brought up, you said you didn't think that it would be legally appropriated or be a request to require that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
Is that something that we could ask Alan, or is that something that we should ask?
The other Alan.
Yes, yeah.
You could, I mean, we are sort of, we suggested that the applicant follow this process as an amendment, and this was one of the major issues that they were grappling with, is how to meet the new ordinance. So certainly from the city's perspective, we feel comfortable that it goes forward under the old rules, so I don't think we necessarily need to do that if you want to, you know.
Initial opinion from the city solicitor? Right. I would agree with that. I kind of come over from, you know, this thinking, and, you know, generally, it's always nice when we have enough discussion that we sort of lock on the consensus on something, but I think this is fairly, you know, it's very reasonable to be on either side of it, but I think for this, you know, because this is a complex, you know, there's a lot of different issues going on right now to keep things moving forward, I would say that I would, you know, accept that we'll stick with the number that was originally granted, underscoring the importance of adhering to the current standards for, you know, in general. And if that's something that, if this were to come up again, that, you know, I think it's probably, if we're outside of the development window, that, you know, that would be a big red flag, but for this particular issue, I would say let's move forward with the current, the current number.
Can we, can you explain a little bit more about the two versus two and a half? How that number was arrived at, and how to kind of maximize the coverage given, given this?
Yeah, so you have the, I don't know if you have the plans, Chris, but can I just plug in?
Yeah.
I'm just going to look at the planting schedule. So I think what, you know, if you're sort of, I mean, I guess the easiest thing to do would be if you're thinking you want a guarantee, there's 329 inches, then you can just say 329 inches worth of trees, and- then you can just say 329 inches worth of trees, um, and they, of course, have to meet the standard of two inches. So I don't know if that number was gained by looking at the schedule and picking two and a half and adding those up, or the two inch number. And I, in fact, I can't, I don't remember exactly what this planting schedule said, but I guess it doesn't much matter in that if you want to see 329, despite what was on the planting schedule, you could just say 329.
I think that would, that would sound like, that we wouldn't want to do anything to inadvertently end up with less than that, so, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly, uh, you know, we tried to count that accurately. I don't know the answer to whether we counted it at two inches or two and a half inches, but our intention is to plant no fewer than 329.
Okay, great.
All right, Mike, one last thing, just while we're on trees. I know in the past five, six years, there's been a couple of issues with some of the planting that has happened up at Hospital Hill. And I have previous all the details. Carolyn, I don't know if you know, some of the trees died and maybe weren't replaced, or were planted in inappropriate spots. Has there been any kind of new plan to address that, or is there anything we should put in place here to make sure that that doesn't happen again on Hospital?
I think the issue really is, um, there needs to be more oversight of the landscapers who are doing the installation, because they really don't know, um, for the most part, most of them aren't planting the way that you're supposed to plant. And so that's the issue. So there are, there's a tree detail that we're required to, to have followed, and I think the issue would be, we just need to make sure, and you can do that in the condition that, um, the, and that, that, that be overseen by, you know, the landscape architect to make sure it's set correctly, or that certainly afterwards, they have to certify that they've all been checked and set. We would, with this number of trees, we would do spot checks, um, but we, we would probably, the best thing to do is probably rely on the certification that they've done the individual of every tree before final sign-off, so we can do that. But yes, it's important, and we've been trying to be more rigorous about making sure the planting's, um, details are accurate, but also, um, following up afterwards, you know, that it's actually installed correctly. The city's very involved, particularly when it's within the right of way to make sure the contractor is doing it correctly.
So what is that condition? Does that condition say that the applicant provided documentation, that trees have been planted according to the details?
Yeah, so I think there are probably a number of things that we've looked at at a staff level that should be, um, certified, and, and be more specific about that, that, that ranges from, you know, making sure that the final, the finished grades are exactly as shown on plan, because there's very complex grading on this site, and any change to that is going to affect drainage, it's going to affect a lot of different things. So I think there's probably a, you know, a list of five or six items that should, um, be part of the condition that say that certification has to happen at certain threshold periods through construction, and then a final certification. So it's not waiting till the end to go back and say, well, we already paid, we did all the stuff, we can't go back and regrade, so...
Okay, is there any requirement that they, trees, um, survive for any period of time?
Um, you, well, um, there is a requirement for all, any project that comes before the planning board, they have a planting plan. If a tree dies, the owners are required to replace those trees, because you're in, once you get an approval, even if a tree dies, you can't just say, oh, well, we won't have that tree. So, um, but it does become more difficult in terms of enforcement, because we don't have someone going around checking every site every year to make sure. The only warranty thing that we had, that we, I mean, most project, um, most contractors get sort of a warranty on trees, um, from, um, during the process, so they have maybe a one-year warranty, what have you, and every subdivision rules, we require that, it's sort of by the time subdivisions are constructed, it's been that long, so you can go back and see if the trees are still there. But typically, under these projects, applicants still need to maintain those trees, you know, perpetually, basically.
So the second issue was the excess on the Memorial Park path, that that's going to be possible? Is there, again, the, the video was long, and there were a lot of options for the path, so can you just remind us what the outstanding question is that we have to decide tonight?
Yeah, so the board, so the board sort of left it for the applicant and the immediate butters to sort of figure out what made sense between the both of them. So I think on that picture, the, at the very southern end of that, um, site...
If my mic just, yeah, right up in the air.
Right, so the, I, there's been an agreement that, um, that, um, that path on the city park would be, um, amenable to both, to both parties. So we don't have a design for that. I think from a staff perspective, it's, as I mentioned with the last meeting, either one is fine, they need to make a connection. The only missing link really is, um, this doesn't actually go to the project, it sends people on this path. So, um, typically, I mean, you need to have a direct connection, so there may, this is the sidewalk on, on the nearest unit. So basically, if I lived in this unit and I were anyway in need of assistance, or I, um, had trouble walking except on level surfaces, I'm going to have to go make a U-turn and come back down here to get up to the street. If I live way up there, it's, you know, you're heading that direction anyway, so it's not too, um, much of a problem. But, um, I think there's a missing link here in this sidewalk that connects all these units to where they're showing this would come out. So I think this piece needs to be thought through a bit more, because this is really sending a really long connection. Whereas if it were coming down this road, it's coming down the driveway anyway, and it comes to that central point that splits.
Where's Memorial Park there?
It's right here. So this is where the fountain is, um, and there's a path around here, and then it, it comes down the grade that way.
So is this something that we'll need to, I mean, we can't make a decision about this tonight, and then we need to ask that the applicant consider that missing link still, and provide an updated...
Yeah, I mean, I think they, I would say that they would have to make that, um, figure out the best way to make that, um, connection. It's...
That's a very steep area, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought it was relatively flat on that assumption.
I agree.
But, you know, if that's the case, I think you need to know that, because it is a circuitous route for that cluster on the...
It's not ideal, yeah, for, for roads like this. So we should be able to do something by August, by the next meeting?
Yes, we will, we'll work on that.
So those two issues, plus the stormwater permit, which is...
Can I ask a question procedurally? So, do we regard the issue of trees as having been voted on and settled, or is it going to come up for discussion again at the next meeting?
Well, my understanding is that it would be part of the list of conditions at the next meeting, when we go to make a decision, you know, that, but that we have had discussion, we have, we're not going to reopen that, that we've come to some agreement on that particular issue. But, you know, we're not individually voting on certain aspects of the, you know, of the application. But, um, you know, I suppose if somebody wanted to, they could, but I think, you know, we've spent between the last meeting and this meeting, I think we've talked through it a good deal, and, um, you know, we want to kind of move us forward, so that we don't have to allocate time in the next meeting to going over it.
So, so, and just about that certification thing that I started to talk about, is something that it could make sure that they enforce it? Or it's being enforced, since, as you suggest, kind of a, things happen, and trees sometimes do not live that long, as expected. Could we use this, this word or this condition about certification through the development, or through the development to completion?
Can you work on that, or is that something that you...
Yeah, I mean, I can, are you talking about, are you talking about, um, for a long-term, um, the longevity of the trees? Or just that they get planted from...
No, I think the longevity, because now, the issue here is that, that's our weird fight, right? Is you want more trees, you want to keep the trees. So if you cannot, because, or if you suggest if you're not requiring more trees, but you want to make sure that whatever you plan... Yeah, I mean, I think at least that you should try to bring that up.
Yeah, even those required. So we could condition, you know, for example, the stormwater system is periodically checked, correct? Like, that's, so following that model that we require periodic check on the health of the trees that have been replaced. I think we can, yeah, we could add that as a condition at the next meeting.
I don't know, a tree expert, but I think generally, if they last a year, in other words, through a full growing and dormant season, they're pretty much on their way.
Yeah, I think we do two years.
Two years, well, that's...
And I was going to say, well, the analog to the stormwater is a little bit different, because that's written that, if I'm not mistaken, that the requirements, uh, in the stormwater management bylaws are written that that report gets done in perpetuity.
Right, yeah. But, you know, you could also reinforce that, you know, after the two-year window, um, notice that if all the plantings are, you know, have survived, but also if they die, no matter when, even after the two years, if they have to go.
That could be required on...
Yeah.
What about, how long, how long will it take to develop this project?
You have a better sense than I do.
Well, we're hoping to complete between two and three years.
So we could say, no CO after two years from commencement of the project? All the trees have to be alive? At least that's a point at which it would be enforceable.
Although the issue isn't whether or not they're alive, I mean, if they die, they have to be...
Right.
You know, I mean, the, the plan on paper has to be seen in real life.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be the same tree, it just has to be a living tree. I could send you draft conditions for you to look at with those...
I think, I think it'd be good, because then at least we try to...
And it's certainly in the developer's interest to ensure they live, because it would be far more expensive to let them die and have to keep replacing them. So there is, and there's a financial incentive to make sure they live.
Unless they sold all the units and are moved to, you know, Switzerland.
Well, and I'm going to make an assumption about the people who move into cohousing, that they probably appreciate and want as many trees as they can to be in their yard, so they're not going to run a monkey around them. There are evidence, since this is where people will cut down a tree in their yard in order to make room for something else that they've been on the plan, so...
I, I would expect to move down the road, there are going to be more trees, not fewer on this site, yeah.
So we did open, uh, this to public comment earlier, when we were talking just about that tree issue, but I do want to just reopen and remind folks that if you do have other issues related to this application, comments that you'd like to make, that the floor is open, please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
I'll just say that, um...
Your name and address again?
I'm Deborah Shifter, I'm at 26 Crescent Street, and I am hoping to be living in this project, and so I just want to, and... We have been working really hard for a long time, and we're really anxious to get it going. And it's disappointing to wait for, we get, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting, but it's not starting. And so I'm, do really hope that it'll pass in two weeks.
Appreciate that, thank you. And again, we are waiting on the stormwater permit, which is an incredibly critical part of any development.
No, I understand, and that's very important, right.
Other comments and concerns, questions, input? We have a full house here. Other than that, I would entertain a motion to continue this.
So, um, you need a time, the ninth, um, agenda, um, is quite full. We had to advertise our ready for, uh, hearing at seven. You can double up and put this at seven in front of the other one, um, what I think, which would be wise, because the other two projects are probably going to be, um, have quite robust discussions, so, um, you... Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that, so I'd recommend that you continue it to 7:00 PM, which would just be the first item above the other 7:00 PM advertised.
And the idea being that, at that point, you will circulate the conditions, and we all are on the same page at this point, so at that point, what we're doing is a formal vote and hearing.
You would hear back the comments from DPW, the hearing's still open, so you'd be taking the comments in from DPW, reviewing draft conditions that I will, um, send out beforehand, and discussing them, and then making a decision.
And the big unknown, I guess, would be a trail connection? So if that were to fall apart, and there's no possible way, then we have to talk about that.
Right.
So continuation to August 9th at 7:00 PM, is there a motion for that?
So, who?
Saki?
Great. All in favor? All opposed? Hearing is continued to August 9th, uh, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, at 7:30 PM, a subdivision amendment by Emerson Way LLC, MAP ID 36-16, to allocate six previously identified portable units to another site at Emerson Way in Florence. I have a financial connection to Hampshire Property Management, which is a party to Emerson Way LLC in the form of a, being a client of Hampshire Property Management, so I'm going to recuse myself from this particular issue. Uh, I own units in a condominium association that is represented or managed by Hampshire Property Management, which is a part of Emerson Way LLC. So I have a financial connection to them. I don't think that it would, it would be my ability to be objective, but I know that I should, yeah.
So technically, if you do that, you should step down, which means we need to...
That wasn't intentional.
It wasn't!
No! He feels so good on that.
Thank you.
Carolyn, can you also clarify, this is related to a subdivision, so can Alan and I vote ultimately, or not?
Good question, um...
What was the question?
Because we're associates.
Yes, so, um, so, so, right, so as associate members, you cannot vote on the subdivision amendment. So we need a majority of a quorum present to approve. So one, two, three, that leaves three, you need a unanimous vote. So, um, that's, um, where we stand.
So, but we can participate in the discussion if I understand all of that?
Right, right. And so if I support it, I should come back and work the other business? Oh, there's none, there's nothing, okay.
So Carolyn, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So does this mean it needs to be unanimous vote because of the number of people who's present?
Yes.
Or...
Or...
Postpone?
Yeah, right, we couldn't postpone until August 9th.
Go for it.
Go for it.
My name is Steve Ferrari, I'm here tonight representing Emerson Way LLC, who is the owner of the Emerson Way subdivision in Florence, Massachusetts. Also tonight, we have Rich Madowitz, who's the principal in Emerson Way LLC, and Mark Donald, oh, he is here, and from Virture Design Group, and MJ Adams, who has been hired by Emerson Way LLC as a consultant on the affordability issues. So we're here tonight to request an amendment to the subdivision approval, or the special permit, to transfer six of the eight affordable housing units that were required under the original approval to a city-owned parcel that's located nearby on Brick Pit Road. We hope to develop a plan for nine small affordable units. These homes would be a Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity on the city-owned site. For the past six months, we've been working with Pioneer Valley Habitat, Virture Design Group, MJR Consulting, and Wayne Feig to come up with a plan that would be acceptable to Pioneer Valley Habitat, and that makes sense, given the constraints of the parcel on Brick Pit Road. As a precursor to continuing with this effort, we're requesting this amendment, so we can, uh, have confidence that if we're able to put this deal together with Habitat, we'll be able to transfer... that if we're able to put this deal together with Habitat, we'll be able to transfer six of the eight affordable units to this new site. If the amendment is granted, we plan to work with Virture Design Group to develop final plans for our nine small homes on six lots. We will pursue any required approvals from the city, prepare construction budgets for the infrastructure for the development, and then present this development plan to the board at Pioneer Valley Habitat. And if we're able to get the board to accept it, the ultimate goal is for Emerson Way LLC to purchase the six lots from the city, gift those lots to Habitat, also make a substantial contribution towards the development cost for the site. I have a few slides to help explain this fairly convoluted and complicated project. So this is a aerial view of the subdivision, it was taken about a month ago, shows the status of current buildout. There are fifty-one single-family lots in the subdivision and four duplex lots. And so far, we've built twenty-seven homes and there are another five sites that are either currently under contract or under construction. This is aerial view of the Emerson Way subdivision. And really across the street on Burt's Bit Road is a ten-lot parcel that was created as part of a deal whereby the city acquired rights to protect a large area above the site. And in exchange, they created this ten-lot piece that could be developed. And the city has been trying to find developers for that parcel. This is the copy of the approved subdivision plan, it goes from two thousand three, two thousand four, for the subdivision. We have some more detail. The four lots that are colored here are the duplex lots that were set up to be developed as affordable housing units. We do plan to build a duplex on lot fifteen and sixteen right here and would hope to transfer the affordable units that would be built on these three lots to the other Burt's Bit Road site.
Just to clarify for now, I'm a little confused by your term duplex. It's a double lot or you're gonna put duplex houses there?
Well, the designation on the plan has two lot numbers, it's really a single lot that would hold, that would hold a duplex structure. So there'd be two dwelling units on a single lot numbered, for instance, thirty-nine and four. But it's now created as a single.
One unit which is a duplex or two smaller homes?
A combined, attached duplex structure, two residential units in one building.
Excuse me, can I, what, are you, forgive me if you're going on to explain this, but what are you, what would happen to the four duplex lots if your plan went through?
They would become a single-family technical lots.
So they would be free of any restriction and you would sell them for whatever.
Right, whatever we could sell. This is a, we've actually had the affordable unit designed for some time, we started working on this issue back in two thousand fourteen. These are some plans that were developed by Human Riddle Architects for the duplex unit that we, that we hope to build. It's, there are two two-story units, about thirteen hundred square feet of space, attached garage, and the lot we've chosen would accommodate a walkout basement so that actually be the ability to put another room or two in the basement of the structure. So I think M J is gonna make a quick presentation about the logic for this switch and I'll be here if anyone has any questions.
Hi, I'm M J Adams, and I've been working with Emerson Way since February two thousand and fourteen. They brought me on board to start working on how you put, or how you might think of framing affordability into a mixed-use development. We started working on this, like I said, four years ago, worked with Peg Keller, the housing planner, to really work through the details of the costing, the affordability, the affordable housing deed writers, and what the structure might look like. We've been getting ready to start construction on the first one for a while, we've had the designs in hand. And as we've been moving forward and preparing for that, Habitat approached Steve Ferrari to say they were working on the Burt Bog development and that they know of a developer who might be able to do something around the lots that they were planning, that they had received from the city. So we started to have more in-depth conversations with Habitat and started to talk about the challenges that both Habitat and any affordable housing development might face in terms of trying to put these units into use and create these units that will work for the long-term for the families who would be buying them. And it seemed as if this was a worthy conversation to pursue. And the reason we're here tonight is because Habitat is, we've been having conversations with Habitat, but we're at a point where we need to have more thorough and detailed pre-development work done before we enter into a more serious conversation and actually seek to finalize this, this transfer, should you approve it. The idea would be to transfer the six of the eight affordable units that were originally to be built at Emerson Way over to the Burt Bog development. And, and that, and our commitment is to build two affordable units at Emerson Way, that will stay. And as Steve showed you, we build the structure that we have designed at, on the green lot. I think it's lot number fourteen and fifteen. But the rationale is really to think the long-term about how to make this sustainable for people who step into homeownership, affordable homeownership, and their finances for the long-term. And the sustainability of how they feel in the context of the neighborhood. Stepping into a Habitat, into a neighborhood that has some pretty expensive homes that are already constructed on the site, may be challenges for families who are at or below eighty percent of the HUD median income. You know, there's the initial house price, but then there's the question of how you might feel living in a neighborhood where you are clearly or obviously not at the income, same income level as your neighbors. That said, the Habitat neighborhood that's happening in this across the street would provide an environment that would be probably more comfortable for people who are earning eighty to, eighty, less than eighty percent of the HUD median income. That's about sixty-five thousand for a family of four, just so you know the numbers. Habitat's, Habitat tends to work at a little lower income level in terms of responding to affordability. But there's a sense of how would this work for the long-term for the families who step into it. So when Habitat approached Steve and we started to have these conversations, we thought it might be a workable solution for us to take a look at transferring the six of the eight affordable units from Emerson Way over to the development that we would do in partnership with Habitat, should Habitat decide to move forward on this. There's no, they haven't made a final decision, there's negotiations and discussions going on, but it is not a final deal yet. So what we're looking for tonight is for contingent consideration from the planning board to allow the transfer of the six units, six affordable units from Emerson Way over to the development with Habitat, should the Habitat Board decide that they wanted to proceed. And I don't wanna speak for Habitat, but Habitat clearly has been in these conversations with us and we're hopeful that that might work out for the homeowners, for the city, and for the community.
I have a question. What is the rationale for moving six of the eight as opposed to all eight? I mean, given the idea that you're proposing that people might not feel comfortable, there are gonna be two units still left in the middle of this higher-income development, so why that decision?
Because I think that the, the initial goal of this was to have mixed-income neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And we've worked on this and we don't wanna entirely abandon that opportunity at Emerson Way. We think that it's a worthy thing to accomplish. The, the question is, will people, how will people feel about buying into that development? And I don't know the answer to that. But it's a, it's a valid question. And I think we feel very committed to, you know, the, the original approval was that there would be some level of affordability at Emerson Way. We feel committed to honor that.
So if I might, across the street at the new cluster, there's currently room for eight building lots? So six, I'm building a, an enclave of low, of affordable housing right there?
Let me, give me one second, I know, four, man. So, a lot across the, oh, here we go. So this is the parcel on the other side of Burt's Bit Road. It was created as a ten-lot piece and so far, these two parcels have either been purchased by or given to the original property owner. The deal was created basically to protect a large amount of conservation area above Burt's Bit Road. The original owner called Construction Inc., I think received these two lots in exchange for this transaction. This lot has been, is either under contract or has been promised to an individual who plans to build a house here. These two lots that are on Burt's Bit Road, the city hasn't, hadn't intended to give these to Habitat to develop a total of three affordable units. And the reason I was approached, I have a long-term relationship with Habitat. In fact, the first time I, I really learned about Habitat was in this room when they came to be an obnoxious abutter for a project that was being built right next to me, where a very similar development was happening, the city had acquired back land and was buying the front parcel and creating a cluster development to give to Habitat. Well, I ended up thinking it was a pretty cool idea and spent the next twelve months every weekend as a volunteer construction supervisor helping get the house built. That's a little backstory. But Megan actually called me because the problem with this site is that if you had the Habitat development here, surrounded by these six lots and even lots on this side, there, there's a lot of engineering work that has to be done to deal with stormwater, there are easements for utilities, there are driveway easements, and Habitat was concerned that it might be a developer who would not be as strongly to that project as somebody who had a relationship with it. So that's how we came to this idea. And looking at, you know, the whole parcel, these six, these four parcels, combined with the two that Habitat was intending to develop, make it really, it's easier to come up with a comprehensive plan for that larger land mass than to try to pigeonhole Habitat into the front piece and then have other people developing the back parcels. So that's kind of the background of how we.
So note that you, just wanted to note that, you know, you all received, and the applicant received a letter from the housing planner for the city of North Hampton, Peg Keller, so you have that in your email. Did you all see that?
Yes.
You know, raising concerns that the transfer then sort of whittles down the idea of scattered-site housing throughout, particularly that subdivision. And that was the, and that was the goal and the impetus and the decision at that time in two thousand and three was to create the units dispersed. So there's that, but I just wanted to make sure that people are aware.
Can, can I just speak to George's question about an enclave of affordable low-income income? Is, at the end of Garfield Avenue, Habitat built six, one, two, three, four, six affordable units together in a little neighborhood. Up on West Hampton Road, Habitat built six units together in a little neighborhood. That, those have worked out quite well from all observations. I think that when people step into homeownership, it's different than what we might perceive as projects or apartments, that it's really a very, it becomes a very different type of neighborhood. And so I wouldn't characterize what Habitat might build as a low-income home.
I apologize for the use of word, but I didn't know how else to use that in that, if they're not, it's not all gonna be market-rate homes, but there'll be a subsidy to them, so. And I take that point really well, M J, and I know you've got a lot of work in this field, but I think the original intent behind Emerson Way was to disperse the affordable housing there so that folks can live amidst people who have a different level of income and there's a mixing then. And maybe there's a, you know, it's more philosophical than anything, there's educational patterns that work both ways. People who live in the large homes are now living side by side with people who aren't. Just as many neighborhoods in North Hampton are like. So, you know, I, I, just to get a step backwards to move them from the sprinkled effect into this more of a cluster area, when there's this opportunity to do it within this larger neighborhood. That's just. Yeah, I, I'm pretty uncomfortable with it for several reasons. First, I, I think the question that Jen raised is a good one. If there's somehow something bad or undesirable about having eight housing units in Emerson Way, why is it good to have only two? I would think, if anything, that's worse. Number one, number two. You know, something about the belief that people in five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses can't live near people in affordable housing, that's pretty harsh. I mean, I'm not gonna lecture to anyone, Joanne. The two of you have more experience in this field certainly than I do or anyone else in the room does. And I'd be interested in hearing from Joanne and M J, I mean, you're, you, you know, you've worked for Habitat for so many years. Now you're kind of on, seems to me, consulting to undermine what you worked for for all those years. I mean, I, I don't understand the moral underpinnings of this position, that we're saying people have to be segregated into upper-income housing and middle-income housing. That obviously is different from what led to the granting of this permit in the first place. I, I have a hard time thinking of a justification or.
Can I speak with that a little?
Sure.
I think that over the years, as I worked at Habitat, one of the biggest challenges we saw was the whole issue around condo, managing condo associations and putting people, low-income people into financial, legal, and neighborhood responsibility, relationships with each other that were complicated. And that does inform my, my point of view in terms of what kind of housing are we building that is affordable to first-line homebuyers. And I, I believe that, I mean, I'm standing here because I believe that what Habitat can offer is closer and more manageable and more desirable for people to feel like they're owners of single-family homes than what they might find that we would build at Emerson Way.
I mean, you're saying that they would, on a personal, day-to-day level, feel uncomfortable living in a neighborhood of very high houses?
I think, I, I think it's naive of us sometimes to think that that works out as smoothly as we'd like to believe it would.
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't wanna be Pollyannaish or not, but is that basically what we're saying?
No.
That people will feel more comfortable with neighbors of their own income level?
I think we're talking about the, the financial relationship that these homeowners will be in at the Emerson Way development, where they'll be part of a homeowners association that is responsible for carrying the cost of a private road maintenance and plowing. That there will be challenges that will come down the road that might stretch it and make it financially difficult for the homeowners, the affordable homeowners, to feel comparable in that neighborhood.
I just wondered if that was not, why, wasn't that thought in the beginning, in the whole? That, that terminal was to cost to maintain. A part of housing, I'm sorry, this eight one, one of the project plus a blue and a.
I think the idea of mixed-income housing is a very noble one and a very flawed one. I think the practical realities of achieving that so that it works well for, especially for the folks who are. for the folks who are at the lower end of the income spectrum, is, is something that we have to be mindful of.
So, just around, so the homeowners association have these extra fees because that's a private way, much like a condo, is I think what I'm hearing. So, does the, the affordable housing kind of ratio kick into that, to their portion of what they put into their homeowners association fee too, on a monthly or annual basis? Do they pay 100%? Do they pay that 65%? Do they pay that 45%?
I don't, no, technically the answer to that, but that's, which, can you answer that?
Presumably it would be shared by their neighbor. I mean, it would be one fee divided two ways, presumably.
Wouldn't that be shared interest by the size of the value of the house? I'm living in a condo and we pay shared interest, I mean, depending on the size...
And that's sometimes, sometimes that's calculated on the, the square footage of the unit they will have.
Yeah, that's my case.
Yeah, but that's, I don't think that would be the case here because these are private builders. So, I think it would be divided per lot, and then if there's a duplex, presumably it would be divided in half for each owner of a duplex. So it would be smaller. I'd be interested if Joanne would care to express her thoughts on that.
Thank you. It's that...
Joanne, Joanne, Joanne.
I'm Joanne Campbell, Valley Community Development, so I am here to speak. I have some concerns about this request. You know, it was approved 15 years ago and, you know, not one unit has been built. And, you know, I sort of was trying to think of some positive things, like at least if a couple of units had been built over time. And then the developer came and felt that there were some things that were happening that prevented him from moving forward, but this has been going on. I mean, I talked to Doug Cole when this first was approved, so, you know, that, that rubs me wrong. I think, you know, it's a requirement of the permit that's, they got some sort of zoning relief or some agreement that was made back then. I, I agree with Alan's question, what happens to those lots? Now they become market-rate units as well, so there's more, again, more income, you know, more profit for the developer that was supposed to build. I do want to make the point that, you know, any future projects, I would suggest that the planning board do, that phase them in, so if there was affordable units and market units, that for every so many market units, affordable housing had to be built, so he wouldn't be here 15 years later with, I think there's a 27 units and five units in construction. I think also the Habitat model is, you know, self-built. Don't think, there's a lot of folks, you know, who are necessarily interested in that and what I believe the affordable units in Emerson Way would probably be serving people, probably between 60 and 80% of the median income. Habitat serves people at 60% or less, so it's a different market than what was originally planned. Obviously, we do homeownership counseling and whether it was 15 years ago or today, there is such a backlog of people who want to buy affordable, you know, who want to buy a home, who make 80% or less, and they're in a desperate mode with prices constantly escalating. And in 2003, 2005, before the bubble burst, I mean, it's just, you know, losing these units to me is, is tragic. I, the issue of, you know, will the folks fit in there really rubs me wrong as well. Are there class issues? Aren't we trying to try to work around getting people to know people at different income levels and what is your life like, what is my life like? And to make it sound like these folks should be moved somewhere else just really makes me feel bad. The Ice Pond is a mixed-income development. Have there been some class issues there? Yeah, they had to work them out, but it just, it just makes me feel really uncomfortable. And I'm not quite sure, if it's a financial reason, why aren't the units being built there? That sort of hasn't been raised tonight about, why are they being moved off? Is it simply because the families won't fit or is it a financial, that the developer hasn't figured out a way financially to build these homes there? The other thing, just looking at the four lots, to me, it looked like the smallest lot was the lot they were giving to the two families in Emerson Way. So, the other larger lots, they look larger to me. So, these are my comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The median low-income homes that were speaking of on Emerson Way, if they get transferred to this burgs box, they no longer become affordable housing, they now become part of another entity, Habitat? So they're serving two different types of buyers? Is that true or not? I guess I'm...
So, just, I want to make sure I understand your question. So, if the units that are required to be built by Emerson Way LLC are sort of transferred physically to another location, they would still, so long as they still meet the, build the number that they were supposed to build, it doesn't really matter so much the entity because our, our definition of affordability isn't then tiered, we have one threshold, it's 80% or below area median income. So, we don't look at the tiers between, you know, 20 and 80, or 30% and 80%. So, that's just sort of a target, I guess, that the, either Habitat or Valley CDC look at and try to meet, and also federal guidelines about different financial responsibilities or opportunities there are for building affordable units. If it meets the 80% or lower threshold, that meets the zoning.
I didn't come back, 80% or lower, yes, of area median. And what is our area median, Joanne? Just sorry, it's fine, I'm just trying to...
I would have to turn to one of these two folks to know what the current number is. I mean, it changed, they, they adjusted, I think, is it around 55?
It's about 64 for a family of four.
Okay, 64 for a family of four. For a family of four. So they do it at different family size too, but so for a family of four.
If they stay at Emerson Way, it doesn't go to Habitat. Habitat, as I understand, Joanne, you just said that's a, and I think I've seen on television that you're, you're putting some sweat equity into this property in order to purchase this property, correct? But if it stays at Emerson Way, that's not how this is going to go.
And that's up to the, I mean, certainly the property owner can negotiate that, but it's really up to the property owner to figure out how that's managed.
As long as they turn out to be affordable.
Right, right, as long as they meet that criteria. So the other question that, you know, there are certainly issues about the homeowners association and the responsibilities, you know, in perpetuity for the street and the infrastructure. There are also requirements at Burbs Bog for the same thing, in fact, the stormwater is even more tenuous there. DPW noticed some concerns about expanding the total number of, the total footprint because the stormwater engineer there was, is very complicated. So, there would also be an association and responsibilities for maintaining a perpetuity infrastructure of that site, certainly not as big of a road, but it's also spread across more units and versus less.
Karen, can you describe a little bit more in your memo, you suggested that one of the benefits of allowing this would be that this kind of, and they reference this as well, but this would sort of enable all of these lots to be developed together in a way that would be complicated otherwise? Could you just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of the stormwater piece, is that these are individual lots. Currently, sort of the, the idea was there'd be shared driveways, so those sort of rectangle, skinny rectangles represent, I think that's what's showing the easements for the shared driveways. So, there's that piece, but also because the stormwater is so, is, the stormwater is really, permit was issued for the common land of development, so there's an order in which the units have to be built in order to comply with the way the stormwater system was engineered, so that's one piece currently, and that can be amended for sure if a different mechanism for addressing stormwater can be made. But, so those would all, the way it's laid out is they would all be 10 individual lots with 10 owners. And then the folks that were sharing driveways would just have their driveway piece shared between one or two lots, depending on how many. And, but the, the, so that's how, that's how the plan was approved, with 10 separate building owners. That was, that was the idea, there'd be 10 separate owners for each of those lots.
This plan came before the planning board?
Yeah, as a cluster and preserving permanently open space.
And, okay, and there was no conditions around affordable housing at that point on that plan?
Yeah. No, 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 no.
So the city is just trying to find an investor more or less, or a developer to help build this out now, because they don't have enough...
So we issued, so, right, there's, the idea was that we, to offset, as we, we call it a limited development project, to offset the acquisition of the open space for the city, we carved out building lots. And then the idea would be to sell the building lots to, you know, pay back that, that partial cost of the overall acquisition of the open space.
Question about the permit that was granted for Emerson Way. So as has been referred to, it's 15 years and none of the units have been, none of the affordable units have been built. Is there any thing to, by which the city could require that they keep up? Tell me, what if, what if they just develop all the other units in the subdivision and never build the affordable ones?
Well, I mean, the short answer would be they'd be in violation of their permits. However, as part of subdivision, there's a financial performance guarantee that's in place.
So that's...
So that's another mechanism that, and, and so various times they've come to the board asking for change in that amount. And the topic of when, you know, the question of when are the units going to be under construction has come up at various times when they've come back to the board, but they've, you know, I think the last time they came, they showed that they were working on these design plans that you saw tonight for duplex.
2014?
Yeah, I don't remember if that was the last time they amended the, the performance guarantee, but...
Could someone clarify, for, for, at least me again, what is, what is happening on the one affordable lot that is being dealt with, or is that under construction, or what did you say? No, actually, I'd like to step back a bit because I really am the instigator of this whole thing. And even though I built houses in Emerson Way and worked for Rich, I really have no financial shoo-in this. This happened because I got a call from Megan, the executive director of Habitat. We've been, as agent of the developer, we've been trying since 2014 to come up with plans for affordable unit, to budget it and figure out how we can build. Also, as a, as a point of reference, construction didn't start in the subdivision, even though at first days the road was in, the first house wasn't built until 2010, maybe, I think it was 2010?
2011.
2011, yeah. So this is, this was a subdivision that sat idle for a long time for many reasons. Acknowledging the problems we have, and granted, it's a financial hardship to build these units because they're going to cost more to look at the seller for. That's the economic reality. We're going to build something there that is fitting to the style of homes in the neighborhood. If you look at median income compared to housing costs in 2010 when the subdivision was approved, look at that figure today, the spread is incredible. I'm seriously considering getting out of the homebuilding business because prices are crazy. So, again, the reason we're here is because there was this odd confluence of people who had a relationship to Habitat, the city who had a parcel that needed to be developed, and I really thought there was an opportunity, a unique opportunity, to get to Habitat a substantial contribution that would help them achieve their goal of building 40,000. When you step back and look at it, the total, the total gift that might end up being given to Habitat is close to quarter of a million dollars. And that's driven by a bunch of factors, not all altruistic, but just a reflection of the reality of... I'm sorry, close to what figure? A quarter of a million dollars. And, you know, so that's, that's really why we're here, because I was trying to drive the bus, considering that this was a, a unique opportunity to put together a bunch of players who otherwise wouldn't do it in the same way. At the same time, I'm sorry, isn't it also true that freeing up those three lots, I mean, I shouldn't get into anyone's business, financial, how much money they're going to make on this or that, but it's well-known that lots sell for $125,000 each, so that'll free up $375,000 of saleable lots. How does that make, you know, how does that make us finance this deal? But then, what your original question, Alan, was about? Well, what's happening to, MJ may have said there's one lot that's being built on now? Yeah, we chose lot 14 and 15 mostly, it is the smallest lot, it actually is a small lot because land behind the lot was gifted to the city as part of the open space plan. But we chose that lot because it has topography that lets you build a walkout basement, which is the cheapest way to build additional space. So it's a way to get more value out of that house and still make it affordable, and that's why we chose that. So that one is under construction? We have the plans for it, planning this out. Oh, just start. Yep. And then that will be offered at a price that will satisfy, that will satisfy the affordability requirement?
That would be $225,000 per unit, yes.
And that's without any relationship to Habitat, to your management?
No relationship to Habitat, using the Affordable First-Time Homebuyer Mortgage Program products.
And I'd also have to say that Emerson, it's a great neighborhood. I mean, I have clients there who, when I expressed to them what we're planning to do, they said, no, we want the 40,000 here. So, it's a complicated issue, you know, it's, there are economic realities, there are social realities. It's just, I really saw this as an opportunity to make something happen that we work around. It's just, it's a tough dilemma, you know, or...
So, the units, the affordable units are going to be built either way, right? They have to be either in the initial development or moved across the way, but in the one case Habitat and the city benefits, but the developer also benefits because they're freed up and then have some extra profit and we don't have as much of a mixed income, direct mixed income in the neighborhood.
Right.
So the main issue is, is cluster development count, right? Affordable housing, that would be the main issue?
Not even low income. I mean, should be accurate, what, middle income, or I'm not sure, I'll turn it in.
And affordable housing.
Workforce housing?
Yeah.
Well, it's not even workforce housing. It's support only.
Yeah.
Do we have to open up for more public comments? Is there already open?
Yeah, you opened it up, but you...
Oh, am I supposed to?
Well, somebody needs to recognize people. I can't.
So, should you open? I thought everybody was already talking, but, can you open for, for the public too? Do you have any comments or additional comments on top of what you kind of are concerned about maybe?
Okay. My name's Dante Cutrosi and I live in 798 Burrisburg Road. MJ, I think, reflected what I, I feel that if this is approved, that we're setting the precedence for any other contractor to come in.
a precedence for any other contractor to come in to the city and say, I'm going to build so many houses on these lots, and that he's required to build so many affordable housing lots. So all of a sudden, like after fifteen years, ten years, he decides, oh, I'm making big bucks on, on these units I'm building, and maybe I can work a deal with the city or someone else to give it to affordable housing, which I'm not opposed against, but I think that it might be setting a precedent. So that's why I got this up.
Thank you.
Please come.
I'm Rossell, I'm here, I live on Emerson Way, and I was very aware, when my wife and I looked at lots, that there were going to be a certain number of affordable housing units built at some point. That was a selling point for me. I think frankly, one of the things that Emerson Way is now missing, which isn't very much, but it's precisely what's about to perhaps go, namely affordable housing, I think of the word diversity. I think of the idea of a neighborhood as being complex, varied, and not homogenized. And I, I worry about the loss of what I had assumed were going to be X number of units of affordable housing, because of the quality of the neighborhood, which is high, don't get me wrong, I'm not malcontent, not by any means. I'm a little concerned also by the, hearing the possibility that decisions might be made for other people, namely the assumption that people who need to find affordable housing won't make intelligent decisions about things like homeowners associations and so forth. I think that, you know, we all make good decisions and we all make bad decisions, and it's not necessarily income driven. Not having a lot of money doesn't make you stupid. So that's my comment.
Hi, I'm Jan Zawaki, I'm from seven eight eight Wrist Fair Road. This is a little intimidating for me, so pardon me.
So we're all friends again.
We met, it was probably over a year ago, I believe, with Wayne, I think, from the planning commission, where initially we were talking about the ten lots that, it's definitely across the street from where I am. And what was described was, what is currently under, the current plans on Emerson Way would be mixed income. And so it's a little unsettling to see, we were, he was talking about three, he was calling them affordable units, single family homes, and then other, I don't know what the right term is, current market value homes. So that, what was presented to us a year ago, seems like what was planned for Emerson Way, so you'd have two separate areas with the same type of environment, which, and I'm not an expert on housing or, or whatever, but, you know, I, I share this gentleman's hope that the diversity and the inclusion would be, you know, sure, there's always going to be bumps in the road, but it really offers a lot of opportunity. And that's, in this area, seems like that's kind of what we're striving for. So I just wanted to share what we had heard about a year ago, from what those, the plans were for those ten units, of those ten lots. And that's, and I haven't heard anything since, I got the notice to come tonight, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Rich Manwitz, I'm one of the developers of Emerson Way. I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I heard your comments very loud and clear, and we're sort of in the pregame here, we're hoping that we'll get approval to transfer those lots, and we're hoping that Habitat will eventually agree to a development. You know, we have to work with the neighbors and it's hard to work on a development when you don't know if it's going to be a viable situation, which is why we're here today. It's almost like the pregame, the season hasn't started. If we get approval here, we'll talk to Habitat, we'll work with their board, and we'll see if we can come up with a development plan. We'll also have setbacks in landscaping, and we're very interested in addressing the concerns of the neighborhood and the neighbors across the street. So I don't want you to think that there hasn't been any thought related to you guys. We haven't met, but we've certainly thought about that piece. The genesis of why I'm here, to some extent, is Wayne called me and said, would you take on another subdivision development? And it produced Burt's Bog. And I said that I really didn't have an interest in that. And then we started percolating, and Steve Bog was approached by Megan. And the real genesis of the whole three-party arrangement is economic. And let me explain how this works and why we think it might be a benefit to all parties. Alan's correct that we have an economic gain, in fact, we'll have three lots to sell, although those three, we have plenty of inventory, so those additional revenue dollars will be again in the subdivision. So when we look at that additional revenue, we are effectively transferring that. We are, have agreed to make a minimum of a quarter million dollar donation to Habitat. That will go to the Burt's Bog development, and it will include land purchase, it will include our development skills in terms of pre-development work. It will leave whatever's remaining in a pot of money for site work, and it can jumpstart the development. I, I think that that may be one of the larger donations that Habitat's have received. And it appealed to them on the sense of having land, pre-development work, and an additional pot of money for site costs, which seemed pretty advantageous. On our side, despite what the perception is, we're fifteen years into a development, and Emerson Way is not going to be a profitable deal. And if anybody has any questions or would like to audit it, I'll pay for the audit if somebody wants to conclude that it's going to be a profitable deal, it's not. Just too many years, too much capital, we've almost paid a million dollars in real estate taxes. So having said that, it's important to understand our economics, which are really far different than in two thousand and three. So there, there's two levels, two sort of parts to the seesaw. On the affordable housing end, there's the household income, which sets the sales price. And in the last fifteen years, household income's been pretty stagnant, I think that that's widely understood. And household income has gone up about twenty percent in those fifteen years. These are approximations, they're not exact. But construction costs have nearly doubled, especially in the last year, we've seen a real escalation in costs. So that seesaw is that we now get twenty percent additional sales revenue, but we have a hundred percent additional construction costs. And so you have a project that's underwater, and with those four affordable housing units, it really becomes way underwater. So for our own self-interest, we're searching for a way of relieving ourselves of something that's not just a little bit debilitating, it's hugely debilitating. So what we would like is to get approval to talk to Habitat, because that's all we're doing right now. This project is going to be dropped through my Habitat, it has to be approved by Habitat. We've already committed to make a minimum of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation. If we're successful, the city will be able to sell the land by year end. Habitat will have a nine single-family home development, which is probably more attractive than, than these duplexes, and a nicer living style. And Emerson Way is transferring a fairly significant financial liability. So for those reasons, we look at this as a possible link for the city in being able to sell the land relatively quickly, a possible link for Habitat if the board approves the land development. And for Emerson Way, a transfer of liabilities, not that we're getting off scot-free, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution is a pretty significant number. And that number could change and could go up, but that's our minimum.
Anybody else?
Can I, Mr. Manwitz, just want to...
Do I have to ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I certainly am not going to audit your books, or, nor does the planning board, I think, have any business figuring out whether you're making money or not. Hopefully you are. But you also have to acknowledge that the value of those lots in fifteen years has gone up. I'm sure they didn't start out at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per lot. So the, the fact that building costs have gone up, and unfortunately, the income of the middle class has not, it isn't the whole story.
Alan, we don't expect to derive any sales dollars from building affordable lots, but because that seesaw's tipped so much, we not only, you're not to derive any land value from those four lots, we'll end up with a fairly large loss.
All right, so you won't be selling the lots, that's right, okay?
So, you know, if this was two thousand and three and you had the same economic equation, these four duplex lots would be already built.
Yeah, okay.
It's that significant a shift.
Do we, can I comment? Do we do the math on the lots again? There's currently eight vacant lots that were named as affordable on Emerson Way?
Four with two units.
Four with two units, okay, so one is being built on, so this, all three other, all of them named three, then you moved across the street. So there would be none other than what's being built?
Right. Which, as Jen pointed out, makes them feel pretty special.
Okay. So, the, the movie is just to, for us to approve, now how to have that, that's what the gentleman says?
So what's in front of you is to question about whether or not to amend the subdivision permit to allow just essentially, instead of eight units, two units of affordable housing at the subdivision. What happens next would be on their side to determine whether or not they can make it work. The nine units they're talking about at Burt's Bog would require an amendment of that permit in front of the planning board to get nine, because nine weren't approved in that, in those four lots, so, or six lots, I guess. So that, but that's a different, that's a different question. So you, and then, but if you were to approve that modification, I would certainly recommend conditions that state, you know, give a tieback, so that those units get built before the last six lots, or I guess, three lots get sold at Emerson Way, for sure.
I'd join, suggest that, put that requirement right, yeah.
Yeah, but it's a little bit different, because now you're, you're shifting the lots somewhere else, you want to make sure that, you know, if something falls apart in that somewhere else, that there's still ample opportunity to come back to the Emerson Way subdivision and build those lots. So it's not just, I think if you approve the request, it should be approved with a condition about reserving lots in the subdivision, so that you can be assured that those, that those affordable units get built.
Yeah, otherwise, there could be a scenario where the developer would be freed from the obligation to build the affordable units, and they would just never get built across the street, maybe, and, I mean, Habitat, which is presumably the recipient of these, isn't even here, so we don't know what their position is. Maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't the right number. Maybe Habitat will end up negotiating for three hundred and fifty. So I don't know that we want to approve anything.
Well, I don't know that you need to approve whatever that number is. I mean, that's a, and I think you heard from the applicants that the board, Habitat Board hasn't voted on this scenario anyway. So what they're, so because there's a transfer here and there are multiple steps involved, this is the first step. So to even see if it's feasible to do all those units at the other site across the way of Burt's Bog, the developer here has to be assured that the board approves moving those. So this is really step one. And so, you know, it may be the step one happens, and that negotiations fall apart between Habitat and Emerson Way LLC, so that's why you need to have a condition that states that if that happens, if anything happens where those units aren't going to be built across the way, that they return essentially to the subdivision.
Well, or, as you said earlier, they couldn't get a release of, or a release of the last six lots.
Right, but I want you, you would want to be clear about what that, what that mechanism is. So I think there's some questions if you want...
Oh, is that part of the agreement? I thought this whole thing was being proposed was conditional on that moving forward with Habitat, and nothing would happen if it did.
That's correct.
So can you state your name and address for the...
Sure. John Kelly, sixty-six Emerson Way.
Okay.
Just my reading of the thing that was proposed. Could the paper you have come up? Seems like the paper you have in front of you said that, what exactly you were just saying, that if they couldn't come to terms with Habitat, then nothing would happen.
Right, it's still, they're proposing that in the application, but I think your decision should still be conditioned upon that. And with, I mean, it's typical that you have sort of a check to make sure that, that happens and that reinforces their obligation.
So there would have to be some kind of time frame put to that, because again, those negotiations, the build out of Boggs, the final agreements, the stormwater, this is it could be years down the road. And meanwhile, they would be, Emerson Way could continue to build other homes on the lots, not necessarily on these three places, but still continue moving right along as they are.
The other difficulty, I think, that is, so even if the negotiation is made, and which is why I think tying it to some contingency, is that Habitat doesn't build quickly necessarily. I mean, the Garfield lots were four lots or so, that, that whole process took fifteen years in and of itself. So through that timeline, you know, their, their negotiation may happen, they agree to build the units, but you may not see the units because of just the, the model that they, that they use, which is fine, except that in that time period, Emerson Way is completed, and then if something happens, then to whatever, you know, we wouldn't hope that, of course, but you never know what will happen over that period of time. So that's another reason to sort of make sure, not only that the, that the agreement gets struck, but also that there's construction underway.
So, one more question in the back there. Please, if you don't mind.
No.
So really what we're asking for is, we're asking to have the ability to talk to Habitat and see if we can make a deal happen, and then present a real plan to you. But what you just suggested is not legally viable in terms of Emerson Way. Once we transfer the, and give the land to Habitat, we have no control over the timeline when things get built. We do have control over the, the one duplex that Emerson Way owns, and we will commit to start that in the second half of this year, and we will commit to finishing that in the first half of next year. But the idea that we can control the subdivision after we've sold the land is a legally insurmountable thing for us to add this description, because it's totally out of our control. Thank you for your time.
Just one other.
And, please, one more.
One quick comment that I neglected to mention.
One quick comment that I neglected to mention. A group that seems to have gotten lost in the mix here when we met last year, when it was presented to, to us at Ryan Road School, was at the target group, and Habitat was in the mix from the beginning as an option. But the target group that they were looking at, hoping to bring into the area, were teachers, firefighters, entry-level professionals, because they can't afford homes in the city right now. And that group seems to have gotten lost in the mix, and I don't know, you know, you know, habitatically, you know, low incomes, but I don't know what these entry-level professionals make, but that, I haven't heard that in the discussion, but I just wanted to make sure that that was also on the table, that that was the vision as of last year, to try and attract more folks and for affordable homes for these entry-level professionals.
Anyway, so, what we-
I'm not sure that I, well, I guess I can't even vote, but I, I don't know, I mean, there's so many, it's such a complicated transaction, and with the unknown of the status of the dealings between Habitat and Emerson LLC, I think there's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, would it make sense to tell them to come back when-
Can I just say one last thing, if you don't mind?
Sure, please.
This is kind of like the cart and the horse. So, really what we're asking for is, allow us to talk to Habitat, allow us the ability to transfer. What we're really saying is that there's a lot of pre-development work. We've got to satisfy Habitat, we've got to come up with the development that works with it. We're not sure if we can do that, but let's suppose that we can do that. That's going to take a fairly hefty bit of pre-development work, and it's expensive. We don't want to go ahead with that unless we know that you guys will approve the transfer. If you approve the transfer, it just allows us to present something if we're able to agree to something with Habitat, and you guys get the right to say yea or nay. But allow us to go forward with Habitat and see if we can make any viable development. And you guys can decide later down the line, does this make sense, or doesn't it make the sense? But right now, we're going to spend 25,000 or 50,000 in pre-development work, and we don't want to do that unless we know that you guys are willing to take a look at this development after it's completed. So, really, all we're asking you to do is allow us to transfer, and then we go back and you guys can decide, does this make sense, or doesn't it make sense?
But to your earlier point, I thought if, if once you've transferred it, then you don't actually have control.
We don't get another fight at the apple.
No, but, but what I'm saying is that, I understand what your point is. What we're saying is that if we are able to come up with a Habitat development that you approve, the timing of the Habitat building, we can't speak to. But what we can speak to is that we've created an environment where Habitat has a situation that we think is somewhat unique, and I believe it's the largest donation they've ever received in their history. So, we're not trying to walk away scot-free, but we don't want to spend 25,000 or 50,000 in pre-development work and end up in a meeting like this where you guys say, well, we don't really want to transfer. What we want, what we want to do is, we want to come back to the board and with, with definitive plans and let you vote yea or nay at that time.
A definitive plan for Boggs, whatever, across the street, that would be the plan.
Right, you have full, full domain over what would be a future development of it.
So, but not, not, not the cost of it, would, we couldn't reap, how could we control whether it's affordable?
You, it would have to be, you wouldn't be worried about the cost, you'd be concerned about making sure that it's-
Affordable to buy.
Yeah, established as an affordable unit.
But that, since that's a different parcel of land, how could we impose a restriction on Emerson Way?
So, presuming that it's Habitat, that's what they build, that's the only thing they do. So, that will meet that criteria.
So, we could theoretically allow this with a restriction that would be, that it, that the units be transferred to Habitat and that they would build, I don't know how that's enforceable.
So, that the units could be transferred to the project across the way, so six units minimally would be transferred.
And once the transfer never occurs, or it never gets built, never up?
Right, so that's where, that's where the time limit would, or, or some tieback to the final build out of Emerson Way. I mean, presumably, that pre-development would be taking place in the, in the coming, you know, zero to 12 months, at which point they're not going to have been able to sell all the remaining lots anyway. So, unless I'm not understanding their timeline, and, you know, you might want to check in with, with Rich again about that, but tying it to, you know, the transfer of land to Habitat as proposed could be tied, you know, if that falls apart, you could have that as, you know, that's the threshold that they have to transfer to Habitat as they proposed, as opposed to constructing them. It still is not guaranteed that they're going to be built, because something could happen, but they're in Habitat's portfolio.
And if that doesn't take place, their certain number of lots in Emerson Way would be-
It would revert back to those lots, but you could hold back, you know, you can even hold back those affordable lots for the ti, until the time at which they negotiated the contract with Habitat.
And, and the land was transferred, I mean, no, not the land. How would we, an enforceable contract with Habitat?
Right, so you could see proof of a contract with Habitat to release the affordable lots at Emerson Way.
Yeah, the only transfer to Habitat is money, because, oh, well, not even that. No, it's not, it's maybe-
It's development, yeah, right. Because Habitat wouldn't take on those lots anyway unless they saw that they could build on them, right? So, if they, if they don't, and they can't afford to pay for an engineer to redesign those lots for them, so that, all that work presumably would have to be done before Habitat would take, take those lots down, draw down those lots.
So, if we approve this, then it would still be contingent on Habitat deciding that they've brought in it.
As long as you specify that in your condition, I mean, and, yeah, you'd have to specify that you want proof that they've taken ownership before you release those, either some number of lots or the duplex lots in particular.
Would require certification or something like that from Habitat.
Yeah.
That they were, that they resolved the issues and were taking-
Right, and you would also see, because that, that plan has to come back to you, you would see that in progress essentially, because they, they would have to amend the plan to do nine units as pitched here would require an amendment at that time.
Can we play out that timeline for a minute? Just, so, okay, so they say, we say in theory, if Habitat wants it, and we put in all the necessary conditions, then this can happen, and then Habitat says, yes, we want it, and so the transfer happens.
And then they prove that if what happens, they, that's the proof to show that they've met the, that Emerson Way LLC has met the conditions in this amendment.
And then Habitat would come back to us for an amendment of the plan to allow-
No, you would see that first.
That would happen before, okay, thank you.
Right, because they would, presumably Habitat's not going to sign on the dotted line until they know they can build out what they've been promised to be able to build out.
So, the transfer wouldn't, the transfer wouldn't happen until we had approved that this was actually viable, that doesn't guarantee that the building would actually happen, but the transfer would happen once we decided that it could happen.
Yeah, it's actually, we don't, there wouldn't be a transfer, it would just be a release of that condition and that permit, and that would presumably lead to a transfer of the, I don't know, it wouldn't even be-
Well, it is a transfer of land, because, it's a transfer of land. We put an RFP out on the street, Emerson Way LLC, I think, is the entity that responded to the RFP. So, they have put in a proposal to purchase lots at Bird's Bog. So, they'll, they, if all of that works out, then Emerson Way would have ownership of those lots, and then that's what would be transferred to Habitat ultimately.
Or they could assign that right purchase to Habitat?
Um, I don't, no, that's not the way the RFP, well, they're very specific, the way they responded to the RFP, so they'd have to meet the criteria in the RFP, in their response.
So, there would be a transfer and a release of the existing assets. Did you have an additional time?
I'm sorry, I can say.
You know, I, I think Alan raises a point that I think we, we are willing to agree to. We can't control when Habitat builds, but we can restrict those last three duplex lots and put some sort of covenant that says that as Habitat builds, those get released, if that would provide a plan with more comfort. Not sure that accomplishes a lot, because Habitat's in the business of building, but we would be fine with a restriction like that.
So, you know, Emerson LLC has made a wonderful overture and a proposal to the city and to Habitat and to that area of helping to subsidize the creations. But it's not like they're the only game in town, the Boggs just kind of opened up, there could be other, and I, and I don't know what other developers have come through the city to ask about that, and how many other suitors are out there to build on that land, but it seems to be early in the game to say that they are the only game in town for this lot, and if we miss this opportunity, that land's going to lie fallow, and we're not going to, Habitat won't have a chance to build there and another fasten with other partners. I think we're missing, we're, we're putting all of our eggs in our cart, in our horse across the street now, instead of dealing with the issue of what do we do about the loss of affordable housing lots in Emerson Way, which is a very big neighborhood, much bigger than Boggs, and they don't have any affordable housing lots, instead of that one that is currently being built. And I know we can't go back to 2003 and change the conditions of the affordable housing and phase them in and put any fire beneath Emerson LLC to build those lots in the next three years or the next five years, but, you know, they, those lots are always going to be in perpetuity affordable housing. And I hope at some point, whether it's a change in economy or the change in whatever, that they might be built out at some point as affordable housing. And somebody else may come along to work out a deal with the city or with Habitat to build affordable housing across the street. I don't know why we're rushing to make this transfer at this point in time.
I don't, I would just say that, you know, and this point was raised by the applicant previously, is that these 10 lots are tied together by this infrastructure plan that's complicated. So, the more individual separate entities that are involved in building out, it does make it more complicated, which I think has been a deterrent for people to offer purchase of those lots. So, there is definitely a benefit to create, to having sort of a master developer building them all out at once. You're right that, you know, potentially some other master developer could come along, but I know that, you know, it has been complicated by the fact that there's a state, the way the engineering was done for the site requires that there be a specific phasing of the build out of the lots. So, that has been a little bit of an impediment.
Is it meaningful that Habitat isn't here?
They, they are not here on purpose, I think it just, it was a conflict in schedule. They're not not here.
I mean, have you heard from them?
Yes, I mean, yes, they're part of this conversation.
I can speak to it too. In fact, Habitat doesn't have enough information to make an informed decision, but the issue has been discussed.
How could we?
Because we're just asking for the preliminary step, we're not asking for approval.
That's not true, though. You're asking for us to approve your application?
Contingent, contingent upon, I think there was a contract deal out, and if that is unable to, if that deal falls through, stipulated timeframe, then that rules me as an issue upon a deal that doesn't happen. And part of the problem is that we, you know, in order to give them reasonable, their decision is based on economics, on how quickly they develop a project. We need to give them that information, but if you can't get the information, you can't go ahead and spend that money to get the information that Habitat needs unless we have some reasonable expectation that ultimately that there is reason to do the deal.
And, and just, so there is, there is a distinction as well. Just because you say, from a policy perspective, conceptually, you're okay with moving the units, doesn't guarantee, doesn't mean you have to approve the development layout when it comes forward, the amendment to that plan for Bird's Bog. There may be, you know, so that's a separate decision-making process. So, it could, you know, if you decide that transferring the units is, is fine, because it's within proximity, it's, it maybe makes it easier to develop as a common area, that's one decision. A separate, completely separate decision is how that really plays out on the plans at Bird's Bog. So, I, I just want to make sure you're not concerned about sort of pre-approving something you haven't seen across the street.
But you told it earlier, we, the planning board already had approved the plan for-
For 10 individual lots. So, what probably would come back to you is sort of the center block merged as one common development, as opposed to having 10 individual parcels.
So, it would be a big amendment to the original plan, it would be a new plan.
Right.
Alan, if I could also, I believe on this parcel, there have been three RFPs. Wasn't the original one where there was a buyer for the six lots who then backed out?
Right.
There was a, there was a subsequent RFP that nobody responded to, and then the third RFP that we responded to.
So, there have been other attempts to have suitors, suitors have persona.
Yes.
What about this issue of precedent that some of you raised about the idea that 15 years down the road, some of these lots, like, we're going to move these units off? How much of a concern is that from a, from a procedural standpoint?
Yeah, this is, this is a, a specific decision about this project and this amendment. It, you should not feel that you're setting precedent for any other permit that comes in.
But it's a learning experience.
Well, it would be-
So, what have we?
Well, we, I think, Yuri, we have to decide whether or not we want to release these lots with a very strong contingency, allow them to be released with a very, very strong contingency, that if things don't work out-
Guarantee that.
Guarantee that, then they come back to Emerson Way across the street-
Yeah.
-to remain as affordable housing.
Yeah, the, the lots never got transferred, right? They're talking about releasing the restriction, which would then be re-imposed.
Correct, right, which would be re-imposed across the street as affordable housing. So, the Emerson LLC would still be doing their intent from back in 2003 of providing affordable housing lots and structures more or less in the city, just not in that neighborhood. Well, in the same neighborhood, but not-
But not in the neighborhood.
Yeah, in a very different neighborhood, very different neighborhood.
And then leaving one duplex to stand alone.
Right.
amongst a community of larger homes, which we talked about, but they may feel or may not feel odd anyway. And now we're just going to leave them solo.
But- But the reality of the past eight years at least is that those lots may remain fallow and Emerson LLC will not develop them as affordable housing. They will be here in 2025, and they'll still be just in the lot because they can't work, make the numbers work.
And we have to say that those lots, as Rich suggested, could not be sold. I think that was a suggestion. Until Habitat or some similar organization had an approved plan for affordable housing across the street. Would that be the deal?
Well, it would be for a minimum of six additional units beyond what was already envisioned across the street. Two lot.
Six additional, well-
But they're all single family units, right?
It doesn't matter. It's really doesn't- It's just the total number of units. I wouldn't be concerned about single versus duplex.
Six additional over what?
Over, well, currently it was envisioned that we have two affordable units at Burt's Bog. So those were already approved, essentially the concept. So it would be six plus two, so then it would be eight.
So we'd say, have to say it's six units over those two that have already been approved. It's three.
I think it was three for Habitat. So that's what- that's how we came up with mine, six plus three.
So did you end up with more, reportedly in theory, more? If there's still two at Emerson Way and then nine across the street?
No, it's the same.
It's the same?
It's the same from Emerson Way.
Nine out of the ten building lots at Burt's Bog would be affordable housing. Is that what I'm hearing? Nine of the- nine of the ten units of the living houses which go to the single family are going to be affordable housing.
The concept- So this is getting way into the details. So the concept is to redesign that ten lot. So there'll still be two- there'll still be sort of three lots out of the ten that are not going to be Habitat. So there will be nine units plus three total, which will be twelve, but only if the board approves it and they can address this, the issue.
Well, we would just address the nine affordables.
Right.
There would happen to be a total of nine, whatever else they do.
Yes, exactly.
So there'd be have to be nine- There'd have to be a plan submitted and approved by the board for nine affordable units across the street. At which point, the restriction would be removed from the three lots on Emerson Way. But if it's not approved, they- those- the restriction would remain.
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, nine units. Okay, so how?
I just want to just say one last thing. We spent a lot of time and effort. If you look at the plan of what Stephen Grant, the affordable home, it's a very nice home and we decided to really match what's in the neighborhood. So we've been- we try to be as thoughtful as we can in terms of making sure that that did not stick out in any way.
But the economics says that you can't provide three more of these duplex units in Emerson Way for the next five years.
We look at this as if it really comes to fruition, all three parties, the city, Habitat, Emerson Way end up being winners.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last phrase.
If this all works out, there's a lot of pieces that need to fall into place, but the city settles their land relatively quickly at a reasonable price. Habitat has a unique situation in developing nine homes. Emerson Way makes a large contribution, but also has an economic development. All three parties, in theory, might benefit from this transaction.
With all the housing across the street?
Yeah, but obviously a lot of pieces in the puzzle have to fall together. This is the first piece.
But you were just extolling the virtue of this house in Emerson Way.
Well, it's particularly a nice affordable home.
Well, I think to the point of would the two people left at Emerson Way be sort of sore thumbs when that's only two affordable units left in that place? I think that your point is that you design houses that that will automatically be the case?
As best you can.
Well, I think if, even though I started out being pretty skeptical, I think as it presently is being proposed might make sense and result in the objective being accomplished just in a very different way. So I guess, you know, I'm apparently not going to vote. I think it might make sense.
Yeah, I think it might make sense too, just so they can move down the road and have those discussions with Habitat and work through that financing and see as long as we have an ironclad condition that, you know, within, I don't know, what, twenty-four months? You know, I don't know how long we wait before the lots get again remade as affordable in Emerson Way.
But yeah, I think that you can- you don't need to put a timeline on it. You can just require that, you know, before even the next building permit is pulled, that you see a covenant restriction on those three lots, stipulating that they cannot be released until the nine units have been approved at Burt's Bog, and then that gets recorded.
Well, do we need a restriction because there's already the permit? We would be saying that the restriction in the original permit doesn't get released until a subdivision plan is submitted and approved? So that the- their permit essentially contains the covenant, right?
You mean their existing permit?
Right.
Well, there's no restriction on the release of those lots for development though. They're only- there's- they- they're supposed to be affordable lots. But you see, what you're saying is you're going to approve that those lots are not- no longer need to contain those duplex units. That's the subdivision amendment. But the condition is that they're not released for sale as market rate lots until such time as the nine units have been approved across the way.
Much well identified the three lots, just to be clear.
Yeah.
And I might say not just that they're released for sale upon approval of the plan, but perhaps upon construction of three lots where if they're- the three lots across the way were constructed and then one of the lots which was completely proquited- One of the lots there would be released totally for sale at Emerson Way. When three more are built, another lot in Emerson Way is then released. So-
Problem is, as Rich said, they can't control when Habitat builds. Once Habitat has the subdivision approval and owns the lots.
When we have confidence in Habitat, we'll take that on. We'll agree to that.
Much as like we heard the example of Garfield that has taken fifteen years to build out those. They never get to build out there. And it could only be three then affordable, you know, families within the affordable guidelines living there instead of the six in Emerson Way. And I certainly understand about Habitat, yeah, but I think there has to be a little bit more rather than just approval of the plan. Is that my follow-up?
Well, right, the applicant has just said that he would go along with what you just suggested. So let's do that.
Okay, so the lot numbers are four, five. Do you want to run through the numbers just to-
Twenty-five and twenty-six and thirty-nine and forty.
Okay, so two things- I'm just hearing just so you can run through it and be sure. So prior to issues of the next building permit at Emerson Way, a lot sale covenant restriction for lots four, five, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-nine, forty shall be recorded at the registry of deeds indicating that in accordance with subdivision rules that they not be released without signature from the planning board. Basically, that means that would require them to get you to sign off and that the threshold would be the approval- I'm sorry, the build out of units at Burt's Bog, is that right?
Right.
Building permit.
So we're saying they can't pull in more permits on Emerson Way until we have some kind of definitive something happening at Burt's Bog?
No, so the next building permit for Emerson Way can't be pulled until they record a covenant restriction for those three lots that stipulate that that restriction won't be- The lot sale covenant won't be released until they've met the threshold of, you know, two units, then two more, then two more.
Or three and three and three. Isn't it nine? What, so three of them aren't within this?
Right.
Yeah, so two and two and two.
It's just six that they're obligated to do.
So it'd be one lot or three houses?
Two houses and then one lot gets sold, so to speak, at Emerson Way, and then two more houses. And I think, Alan, what you said is the building permits are pulled on two more houses? I mean-
Yeah, I think it should be tied to building permits.
So couldn't they get out all six building permits at once?
Well, if Habitat wants to do that, I guess-
Building permits are only valid for six months, so it really only makes sense if it were combined.
Especially the way they do it, so slowly.
It's slow.
So we don't want to see a house, a CO provided on the two houses and then the lots over at Emerson Way, one lot is able to be sold? So that families-
Yeah, it should be two unit, two dwelling units, however they choose to build.
Yep, because the plan may change. How about a CO for the two dwelling units?
So, you know, if you think about it, you can make that decision. Building permit means that the plan's already been approved by the board and they have a design that's ready to be permitted at the building department.
Right.
Given that construction isn't necessarily so fast as it is on the private market, that would be a much longer window probably from building permit to CO. So just keep that in mind. I mean, you can tie it the way you want, but I think building permits certainly is sufficient because at that point, you're ready to go.
Yeah, not CO, because that's up to Habitat.
Sure, but if they get the building permits, something happens to the general contractor, material costs. They've already sold that parcel of land in Emerson Way, moved, and now the buildings aren't put up, right?
But if Habitat's pulling a building permit, they're going to build the building. And they're- and they- it's all, you know, it's volunteer labor.
Yeah.
So they're still going to build the building.
Okay, so as long as they- as long as it's two to one, kind of, as long as then they don't pull out two more building permits.
Two units for the lot release.
Yeah.
For the building permit.
You know, they- it's not like these are the only three lots they have at Emerson Way. It's from what I heard, there are practically twenty more lots that they're marketing now and can be sold. It's not like we're-
Right, yeah, that's what- this isn't going to hold them up. They'll just sell another one.
So do you want to take a vote?
Yeah, I have to read. Are you going to read?
So, yeah, so- So prior to the issues of the- so you want to read the- what they- You would want to read what their request is to release the conditions.
Less, I got four, yeah.
Seven thirty PM?
Yeah. That's the- so for this, those lots, so that language and then with the condition that prior to the issues of the next building permit at Emerson Way, a lot sale covenant restriction shall be recorded for lots four, five, four slash five, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-nine, and forty in compliance with subdivision regulations that state the lots may not be released for sale until such time on a lot by lot basis that two units of affordable housing are built for a total of six.
Wait, are we going to say built or a CO?
I'm sorry, a building permit.
Yeah, I mean, not a CO, building permit.
Building permit. May not be released until building permits are issued for two units and two units for a total of six at Burt's Bog.
Yep, I'll move to the motion for the subdivision amendment as stated by the statute system.
Second period there.
Of the by Emerson Way LLC, map ID 3668, to allocate six previously identified affordable units to another site at Bog, Burt's Bog, with the conditions recently expressed by our statute system.
And then say question.
So that's what I moved on to. You have a second?
Second.
No second.
What do you?
So three of us?
You know, I'm voting on this. Given that there's still going to be a lot of negotiations going on and understanding that they may come back to us, you know, as we just said as before, but let's hope, let's hope it takes worse. Thank you for allowing us to proceed. Nice to meet you.